January 21st meeting of the county commissioners, if you would stand for the pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Pecas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder to silence your cell phones, the meeting documents are on the end of the desk next to Commissioner Kelly, and contact Robert in the front row if you need anything for listening devices. With that, we can move on.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of January 14th, 2014.
I'll make the motion with a comment.
Second.
You have a motion and a second with a comment. Commissioner Pecas?
Well, I noticed that Roxanne has turned in a lot of fees for her transcripts that are out there. She's a great court reporter, but she waited to the end of the year to turn everything in, and it was the same with mental illness. So, be better if we add periodic submissions instead of, looks like an annualized submission, but those are kind of big.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the county commission minutes, say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number three are bills to be paid in the amount of $647,275.51.
Pay the bills.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments? No comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number four are reports. The register of deeds official statement of revenue report for December 2013 has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is a motion to approve the personnel actions.
A motion to approve routine action.
Routine action.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is a motion to approve a request to schedule premium holidays at the discretion of the human resources director, Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from human resources. That action sounds very broad, so let me put that in context a little bit. As you know, during the last couple of years, we've been fortunate enough that the revenue that we're taking in for our health insurance and our dental insurance premiums has been slightly higher than the expenses. When that happens, I come to you, I make the request, I show you the financials behind the reasoning on why we're making that request. This year, instead of my coming to you periodically throughout 2014, I'd like your approval to go ahead and schedule them at my discretion as long as certain parameters are met. Based on what we're expecting for expenses in 2014, really, if those reserves are anywhere between 2.8, 3.1, we're going to be just fine. In fact, 2.8, 2.9 is probably reasonable. For that reason, I'm asking for your approval that if we go above the 3 million mark on the revenue, or on our health fund, that you allow me to schedule health and dental premium holidays. And what I'll do is not only consider that amount, but also what I know we're expecting for claims coming out in the future. So, it wouldn't be boom, 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 but periodically throughout the year if I thought we could. Go ahead and insert that.
Any questions for Carrie?
This will be just for the fiscal, for 19, for 2014, whatever the year we're in.
So, instead of doing this analysis two or three times a year, what I'd like in the future is to do it once in January, so we know really what we should be looking at. And then if we do have that flexibility, that within the parameters that you give me authorization to do it. So, this is 2014 only.
Any other questions?
I'll move to, go ahead.
Commissioner Pecas?
I'll second it once you make it, but I was just going to comment that we have, sometimes we have peaks and valleys when it comes to our cash flow, and so when we're talking about taking this holiday, we should probably kind of time it after we have one of those valleys to make sure that we're going to make our cash flow. Just a friendly observation.
I have another comment in that, Carrie, how are you going to notify the employees and the commission of all the changes? I mean, when you do a holiday, are you going to just send a memo out, or are you?
Normally, we send out an all-staff email and put something in the highlights when we're going to be scheduling one with a couple of weeks' notice. And then, as far as notifying the commission, I look to you, if I send you an email a week or two ahead of time, would that be sufficient?
You'll just be notifying us rather than having to do the...
Instead of having to do this two or three times during the year.
That's fine.
So, we have a motion?
And a second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I second it.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
With that said, if I could, I mean, we're at 3.3 million right now, which is high, so I would hope that we'd be scheduling one probably sometime in February or March.
Okay, thank you. There are no application for abatements today. There are no notices and requests. There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity, a time when the public can speak on anything that is not on the agenda. If there's anyone that wants to say anything, seeing no one, we can move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is consider a bid award for Minnehaha County Public Safety Building freight elevator refurbishment. Lloyd Olson.
Good morning. Lloyd Olson, Director of Facilities. January 14th, we opened bids for the refurbishment of the freight elevator in the public safety building. We had two bidders, Kone Elevator and Schumacher Elevator. Kone is the low bidder with or without the alternates that we've also listed. We're not recommending accepting alternate number one. It's the door sills on the landings. After much discussion, we've decided they do not need to be replaced. So, with, if we accept alternate number two, which is replacement of the hydraulic cylinder, which is 40 years old, 40-plus years old, it's, goes down into the soil approximately 30 feet. It's not encased in anything, so it's exposed to moisture, and it could have electrolysis going on there, which could cause it to leak. It's significantly less expensive to replace it now than it would be, let's say, 10 years from now, because they're in, partways into the process, so it's less expensive to do. A couple of challenges with this. One is if we accept, or if you accept alternate number two, we exceed the amount that was put in the capital improvement schedule of $80,000. It'll come to $81,565. The other challenge is, is that there's a possibility there could be more expense when they go to pull the cylinder out of the ground. If something would collapse, if the hole will collapse, so there, Sean from TSB is recommending contingency fund of between $10,000 and $20,000. I, even though there is that risk, I would recommend accepting Kone's bid, along with somehow making arrangements for the alternate number two and the contingency fund.
Any questions, Commissioner Pecas?
Well, we've been dealing with this particular issue. I remember one time we even looked at actually switching out from a hydraulic elevator to going to a traditional type lift elevator. The cost to switch it over was catastrophic. We couldn't afford it. So, we went back, and we've had this hydraulic elevator in the public safety building, and we've actually pushed, kicked this cane down the road several times. We need to, we need to take and do this now. And so, I do agree with Lloyd that although it's probably a little bit more than what we actually envisioned, it's going to be a lot more expensive for future commissions to have to deal with this, especially given the fact that we're going to be doing some replacements on that particular elevator system at this time. So, I'm just going to tell you that I support Lloyd on this.
Any other comments, questions for Lloyd? Commissioner Barth?
Lloyd, is there no court site down there that could cause us trouble, or?
Well, we think, we believe that it's probably all court site, but we're not sure. I look back in the records to see when they initially installed it, and that's unforeseen, unless Sean from TSB has any ideas. But with most of the buildings where we put in foundations in, within the four-block area down here, everything's been court site.
Another question?
Yep, Commissioner Barth.
Lloyd, what are we, what about handicap access during this process? Will we be able to maintain access?
Yes, through the public elevator in the front of the building.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Would you like to address, can you or Robert, the funding for the contingency fund, the additional 20, if, $20,000 if we, or maybe for Darlene? If we go with number two, we'd have to have a contingency fund of $10,000 to $20,000. So, just where the funds are coming from?
In the building fund right now, because of the refinancing we did this last year, there is a cash balance in there. You know, that may affect, you know, the Archives Center, but there is cash, additional cash in the building fund that we could maybe use for that.
Okay. Any other questions for Darlene, or looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Clarification of what the motion is for, for the person, and if, which alternate we're going to use.
Alternate two.
And Kone as the contractor?
Yes, Kone.
So, we have a motion and a second to hire Kone as a contractor to replace the, or repair the elevator, and using alternate number two. Okay? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to transfer interest earnings of $11,361.57 accumulated in the road and bridge fund to the general fund. Bob Letts?
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Letts from the auditor's office. At the end of every year, we do designate the amounts of interest earned on various funds into those funds. Most of them are general, general fund dollar amounts, so it's pretty easy to do. Historically, after the fourth quarter, the county commission has made a motion to transfer the highway interest to the general fund. This year's highway fund interest total is $11,361.57. If the commission chose to transfer the interest from the highway fund to the general fund, a motion will be needed to that effect. If you don't, no motion is needed. I'm here to answer questions.
I have questions for Auditor Letts. Commissioner Benega?
Bob, excuse me. Is this traditionally what's been done?
It has been.
Is it transferred to the general fund?
Yes, it has been in the past.
Is this the same kind of conversation we've had in the past about selling items from one fund and giving benefit to the other?
Actually, we get written up for doing that. We get a little ding in our report, and this here is a legitimate transfer of funds. It's allowable under statute, and it's noted in our report, but at the government-wide audit at the end of the year, it's not. So, it's allowable.
Hi, if anybody else, I have a comment. It just, you underlined a couple of things about our policy crediting to income, but at the, at the end of that, it talks about best practices, and that is my concern, is that best practices. And Kirsten, if I could just have you make a comment on that, if you have something to say regarding that. I'm concerned about taking money that was supposed to be highway money and moving into the general fund, and if that really is what we should be doing.
Sure, I can comment on that. I don't believe there's anything in statute that forbids us taking the proceeds of interest from one fund to the other. I think Mr. Letts is correct about that. Whether that's a standard or favored practice, I think is what we're talking about in audit. In auditing, it doesn't appear that it is, but there's nothing in statute that prohibits us from, from doing that. Most of the concern in statute is what, what the actual expenditures from that fund is, and what the revenue sources are for that highway and bridge fund, so.
Darlene, would you want to just comment?
Just a comment. The investment policy that Pam reviewed with you last week includes the crediting of interest, and, you know, and I don't know if you want me to read that, but it, but it is policy, and that's how they stated in the audit, the end-of-the-year audit, that policy is that it's credited to those funds that levy, and then also the internal service fund, which is our health insurance fund, and any grant funds if it is a requirement of the grant. And those might be FEMA or JAG, the JAG grants. And then, any other funds that are set up specifically by our commission, which includes the museum store and the museum enterprise fund. So, that's what the policy has been, and that's why we have done that every year.
Okay, so the policy was that we could do it, or that we should, that we could do it?
That we could, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to transfer the funds from the highway fund to, the interest from the highway fund to the general fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I do think, you know, there's no, we have a contingency fund in the general, through the, through the commission office, but I think that's where the money is needed if, if something unexpected comes up. And so, I just believe the interest itself ought to go back to the general fund.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I'm not going to support it, because I don't agree with the policy. Maybe the auditor says you can do it, but frankly, that's like taking money out of your savings account to put into something that you really didn't expect in another area, just because you needed it in the other area. And this isn't really a reserve as much as it is earnings from cash flow from the highway department. So, it seems to me if they do a fairly decent job of budgeting, you know, that their earnings are going to be a little higher, and, and they ought to get some credit for the fact that they did good cash management. So, I'm going to say that I understand the policy and where the need is, but I think there's a, from my perspective, there's a fuzziness to having transfers like this.
Any other comments?
I'm also going to make a comment, and I, that's actually how I feel about it, too. We've had this discussion in the past about transferring money, interest money from the highway department back into the general fund. And I know it's been done in the past, but I don't know that I feel that that's the right way to go. We've got roads to repair and bridges, and even though they have a healthy fund, I feel like we need to credit back to them the money that was, came out of, from interest bearing funds from them. So, that being said, I think we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Pecas?
Aye.
Benega?
No.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
No. Motion passes three to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for striping and continued maintenance of county roads. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Schultz, Senior Project Engineer, Highway Department. Before you is an agenda item. That is an annual agenda item that we bring forth every year. And again, this is a DOT-sponsored statewide program, frankly. We get pretty good prices for our striping through this program. Last year was the first year that we kind of changed our program. We, we did it every mile on our paved system, and then last year, we elected to kind of do half the county, using I-29 as the, as the barrier between doing it half-wise. We're not 100% on this program. We're going to see how it goes, see how our striping looks about late November on the second year, knowing that our plows like to take off a lot of paint. So, we'll just see how that goes. But another option, if that doesn't go well, is to do all yellow, center lines one year, and then all whites the opposite year. That way, there's some fresh paint, at least delineating the roadway in some way.
Any questions for Shannon? Commissioner Kelly?
Do you go out, are we doing the entire thing, or just half the thing?
Half the county.
Okay. Do you go out, though, and look and see if there's any critical areas where we need to?
Yes.
We need to do what isn't, what wouldn't otherwise be scheduled?
Being that we did it every year up until last year, well, this past summer, actually, there's been no critical areas, because they've been touched every year. In those situations where there's a stop bar perhaps, approaching a town, railroad crossings, those generally are okay. It's usually the center line stripe that takes the beating from the plowed legs the most. And of course, when we do chip seals and overlays and micro-surfacing, we always put fresh paint down on top of that. So, it's probably not...
But I, you know, in the city's case, there's a couple of, like, 41st Louise and 41st Minnesota that seem to be wearing down before they get to it. But you're just, you're seeing any areas in the county that would be critical, you would do every year if you had to.
Yes, we would do that on our own. We probably would take our chip seal contract, you know, paint striping of that, and just do a little quick add if there was something critical, or change order into that contract. I will note that the city paints their entire city twice a year, spring and autumn. So, it's a little different.
Any other questions for Shannon? Look for a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Shannon?
And you have those three copies, correct?
Yes, I do, three copies. Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Infrastructure Management Services for pavement management system. Shannon Schultz.
The much-awaited pavement management system contract is before us. It's been a long haul. The agenda item details kind of some of the trials and tribulations that IMS had in meeting South Dakota DOT audit requirements. And then also, when Monty got involved a little bit on review of the specifications for the systems, he requested that we research the idea of the vendor hosting it on their websites and servers. Turned out that not to be the best in terms of functionality and cost. So, Monty has basically agreed and supports the idea of having it hosted on our own servers here at the county. The total cost for this contract is $170,915. A subcontract with IMS is through Dayton for $59,180. I will point out that the Dayton software is used by the South Dakota DOT, so that's a good resource for us to draw from when and if we need to go away from the vendor and kind of use our resources that are available to us by those experts at the DOT. I will also add that there's a, a good portion of this is going to be paid for through planning funds through CCOG. And the way that guarantee is going to be assured to us is through the UPWP, the Unified Planning Work Program through CCOG. We have a line item there. It was just amended last week to the amount of $179.15 as stated in the memo. So, we are entitled to our complete reimbursement, and on the second page of the memo, it kind of breaks all that out. But basically, we get 51.63 cents on the dollar. No, excuse me. We, that's what they pay. Our proportion is 48.37% of the total, which amounts to $82,671.56.
Questions for Shannon? I actually have a couple of questions. Shannon, I'm wondering, is the contract cost, so our total to pay is the $82,671?
Correct.
Is that cost spread over three years, or is that?
It will be built monthly, probably during the first phase of the project, during the development of it. And then, I believe, we can work with a consultant and build, continue to build it monthly as needed to the term of the contract, or they can request that remaining portion, you know, if there's 20% left and there's two years to go, they'll get 10% one year, 10% the other year.
Okay. I'm wondering what our original estimate was of this plan?
Well, it was $70,000, and that include, at that time, that was me working with the DOT on just basically the Dayton side of things, not necessarily all the training and the downward-facing radar, or laser on, on the machine that rates the roadway for cracks and rutting, et cetera, as well as the forward-facing camera viewer desktop application.
Okay.
So, it kind of grew over time, but with consultant and recommendations from the DOT.
Questions? One more. And we were looking at a start date of, trying to start before the snow came, but obviously, that hasn't happened. So, when are we looking at starting this project?
As soon as this contract is executed, they will receive a notice to proceed and a notice of award basically on the same day.
Okay, but they will wait until we have no snow?
Correct. They're not started until they've received those items.
Okay. Any other questions for Shannon? Entertain a motion for?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I do have a comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a comment from Commissioner Pecas.
This is one of the, I, I think the ideas that this commission had several years ago when we were looking at a new superintendent of roads, that technology is allowing us to go ahead and to really carry out an effective road replacement schedule, and this software will enable us to do that. So, this is absolutely what was envisioned by the county to bring us into the 21st century, and, and I applaud, you know, the fact that they're moving forward with it. Of course, it's a little bit more expensive than what we originally thought, but, you know, if you wait three years, it's going to be a little bit more expensive. But I, I do think that it's important that we move forward and get our best roads and best technology for the county.
Any other questions or comments? That being said, I have a motion and a second for the pavement management system. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shannon.
Item number 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement for final design and construction administration with SEH Inc. for replacement of structure 50-082-110. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So, the type, size, and location study was completed, and now we're ready to go to final design. And so, the contract for this one includes final design as well as construction administration, because based on the TSNL study, we know what structure we're going to be building, and so therefore, we feel comfortable in going to, all the way through contract administration services under the contract. The estimated cost for replacement is $560,000 for an 80-foot two-span slab bridge. Any questions?
Questions for Shannon? I have one question. I'm wondering what the traffic count is like on this. Is this a gravel road? It wasn't on our memo, and so I was just trying to find it on my county map. And is this on a gravel road, and does the traffic count justify spending, you know, by the time we're done, we're going to go 3/4 of a million dollars on a bridge?
That's a great question, Cindy. And let me see if I can find that out. It is a gravel road on 255th Street over West Branch of Skunk Creek. It's one of those, there's, you know, through the TSNL process, this is the least-cost alternative, based on the alternative presented in the TSNL study.
Just an additional comment, I would, you know, I, it's, by the time we finish with everything we've done, it's going to be about 3/4 of a million dollars. And I'm just wondering how much traffic there is on gravel road, and maybe there's a lot. Some places in the county, we have tremendous traffic on there, but if we have one car traveling across this a day, I'm just wondering if we want to put 3/4 of a million dollars in a one-traffic a day. I'm also wondering if there's any federal funding, I mean, is this bridge on the federal watch list or anything that we could, in a year or two, get federal funding to complete this bridge, instead of paying for it all of ourself, if the traffic counts are low?
Well...
I apologize for not asking you before, but Monday was a holiday, so my questions came up over the weekend.
The, if we were to put any project, be it a road or a bridge, into the state program right now, it would be seven, eight years before that was provided. That's just how full the state program is for bridge funds. And that bridge isn't going to make it that long. It's posted now, I think, for six tons, which is barely usable by, by, not much more than residential traffic. I'm certain they can't use it. And so, it's definitely one of the highest priorities, excuse me, of all of our 25 posted bridges, this is probably number five.
Do you know what the tra, what the?
I do not know, Cindy. I do not know the traffic count on that road.
No, I was, I understand.
In general, typically, we never do collect traffic counts on a programmatic basis for gravel roads. If there's a specific request, we will go out and put tubes out and get counts at specific locations, but on a yearly basis, we only do the paved roads for traffic counts.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega?
I agree with Cindy. I think, you know, sometimes we should know what... Shut up. We should really kind of know what the traffic is, because if it's only one or two cars a day, I think we've got to look at it a little more seriously at, we can't close the road because it's township road, but if there's no bridge, they won't have much choice. But we can put them into non-maintained.
Based on the size of the structure.
You know, if it's, if, if it's a lot of cars, or if agricultural traffic is using it a lot, that's a little different story. But would you say it was six ton or three, two ton?
I think it's posted at six tons right now.
So, that's...
Thousand pounds, and it's not one of those charts with the trucks on it. It's a maximum load. It's not per axle. That's the whole gross vehicle weight of the truck. It's 12,000. If it's over that, it can't go over the bridge.
To a twin axle with full of crop not going over there?
Not going across. No. Based on the size of the structure, the drainage area is probably in excess of 4,000 square miles, so you're looking at, excuse me, 4,000 acres. So, that's why the structure is as big as it is.
Yeah.
Well, it would just seem to me in the future, maybe we ought to have a better argument for the bridge by having the, you know, going out early and getting a traffic count and seeing what, you know, what we're voting on, because right now, it might be a private drive for all I know. I don't know, but...
We do look at that when we, at the TSNL stage, for example, those structures just north of Brandon and, and Valley Springs, we are doing that exact thing where we had, we're making a low-water crossing basically because of the low 40 ADT. We did kind of downgrade that in terms of structure replacement with three box culverts, but that's a much lower ADT road than this one. And also, when you do low-water crossing, the core engineers gets pretty excited about not passing a two-year flow rate, and with this large of an area, a two-year flow rate still require probably 150,000 to 200,000 dollar box culvert. So, it's not like, you know, we can go back there and put a couple of round pipes in there and pass the two-year flow rate for a low-water crossing.
Well, I guess, on a county road, because we know the paved roads are, we're going to justify it, I'm sure any one of them would. But I, I think in the future, I should be interested in knowing what... in knowing what, more than what we've been getting in the past. And that's not your fault. It's just what's been happening.
Well, on the, on the TSNL stage, when we come requesting authorization to go into the TSNL study phase, we'll be sure and put in a map, obviously, and we usually do, and then as well as an ADT count.
Thank you.
If, if it's questionable, if we know it's high, we'll probably just go forward with it.
Any other, Commissioner Barth?
You know, I think that our ancestors obviously invested heavily in all of these bridges and stuff. And, you know, if you take out a bridge, that means that somebody getting three miles to the gallon with their tractor is going to have to go around, you know, eight miles of other roads to get to the other side of the creek. And I suspect if you shut the bridge, the traffic count will reduce. And so I think that I'm going to support going forward with this.
Any other questions for Shannon? Thank you, Shannon, for letting me grill you.
I would throw out one more thing. When and if the time comes when this body elects to kind of not go with the equivalent replacement bridge, the township is going to be a tough sell on that.
Yeah.
Because they feel like something's being taken away from them.
Yeah.
So that's something to consider.
Ken.
Just a point of information. Any bridge that's really over 25 feet in length or a township road is a county responsibility for maintenance. That's why our bridge inventory list has over 200 bridges on them that we're responsible for.
Any other questions for Shannon?
Well, I was just going to comment that, you know, you're talking about three miles north of Hartford. And I'm just looking at the map over there on the wall. That's really in close proximity to Hartford. So you're talking about somebody coming from the north, probably into Hartford for whatever reason, fuel, whatever, supplies. I clearly want to make sure that people have access across Skunk Creek. I know it's going to be a little bit more expensive, but then, you know, I'm not Chris Christie either. We're not talking about closing a bridge and, you know, for other purposes. Obviously, we've got, you know, rural fire departments and then emergency management services need to have access across Skunk Creek. So I'm going to be with Commissioner Barth here. I think we got to get it done. It's going to be expensive, but I think, you know, obviously, would we like to have more information? Sure. But we got to, this is an 80-foot span. We're talking about a pretty long bridge as far as Minnehaha County bridges go.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just, my point is, I think we should be given more information to make the decision on it.
Any other comments? Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Shannon. Item number 15 is an update and status report of the 89th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Morning Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. And the legislative update I bring to you this morning is a little bit slimmer than we might normally have at this point in the session. Just in monitoring the bills that are coming in at this point, have not seen a great deal that do have a direct impact on county government. We're seeing a lot that really focus on some of the insurance oversight issues that I know has been a priority on the state level. And we're also in the midst of the number of bills coming in relating to updating outdated language in state statutes for a number of departments. So there's, that makes up a good number of the bills. The list of bills that I listed in my memo really has not changed from last week. I added a few dates and committee referrals in there. But I certainly wouldn't, hope you don't take that to mean we aren't monitoring the bills that are coming in and watching, and we'll continue to do so. And as we see bills come in with more direct impact, we will certainly list them. I will note that just this morning, I noticed that the bill that Registered Geades Julie Risti talked to you about last week, the Uniform Real Property Electronic Recording Act, has now been at least assigned a bill number. It doesn't have bill language in yet, but that, that one is beginning to move through the process. And in coming weeks, I would expect to have much more to discuss with you. If you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Commissioner Kelly?
On 1028, we should probably keep an eye on that because at least, you know, try and get that up to 80, whatever our cost is. I know they've got $70 in there, but I would guess that probably Pennington and Mitchell and some of those areas, their costs are about the same as ours. And I think we're at $82 or $85 a day, so.
Yes. And just for the public who may be watching or listening on TV, House Bill 1028 enactrifies the amount counties may be reimbursed for detainment of parole violators. And so that, the current amount is $50, and the proposal would raise that to $70 a day. And that is indeed one that we will continue to watch.
Commissioner Pecos?
And just for the viewing public, the vast number of parolees that come out of the penitentiary stay right here in River City. So obviously, we have a vested interest to try to keep that cost as accurate as we can.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
Robert, I just heard about a bill, House Bill 1065, which would take away the $10 fee for a concealed weapons permit and make it free. Now, that, in my opinion, would become an unfunded mandate.
Yep.
And I'm sure $10 doesn't cover the cost the sheriff has already just to like stamp the paper. I mean, to actually look and determine that I am a dangerous individual is going to cost more than that. Anyway, if, it worries me that they would make this free and we would then carry the burden of handing that out. And I'd also point out that the, you know, it's not like they're making open records requests free.
Well, we'll take a look at that and even try and work with the sheriff's office and see if we can get an estimate on staff time and what it takes to look into those.
Commissioner Pecos?
Well, you know, and just the background fee to pay to do that is over 30 bucks. I mean, that's at the cheapest if you go way down to, you know, Charles Mcx County where they're willing to do it at basement prices. But obviously, our sheriff's office is going to spend some time trying to do that background check. So that definitely is going to be an unfunded mandate if we drop that.
Dick's got his hand on it.
I'm sorry.
Robert, I'm not sure if you can answer, but on a bill that has a direct effect on us like either, either the one Jeff's talking about or 1068, do we make immediate contact or do we look to see, I mean, this is going to be in committee now probably next week. And if we got Minnehaha County members on the committee, I think we should directly express to them.
I believe Mr. McFarland has been creating his list of email contacts by area legislators and committees this morning. And we are ready to jump on those issues very quickly when they do, when they do come up precisely for that reason, because that, that's where we are most effective in making our communications.
Yeah, because the committees, let's get past the committee, it's got a pretty good chance on the floor, so.
Any other questions for Robert? Commissioner Barth?
I would just say that I do have a concealed weapon permit. And I got into discussion with a fellow at Benson's Flea Market about this issue. And he said that the $10 fee was unconstitutional restraint on his gun ownership. And actually, it's not because, of course, concealed weapons are different. The same fellow said he had no problem with Al Qaeda buying weapons in the United States as long as they were law-abiding.
Well, and since we're on that subject, this has come up before, and I've had conversations with other attorneys, you know, there's also a city ordinance in Sioux Falls that actually prohibits the possession of a concealed weapon as well as a knife, a concealed, like a, like a switchblade knife. So you want to be very aware of that, that it may be in compliance under state law, but city ordinance in Sioux Falls differs. So we have to be very aware of that.
But this...
Commissioner Kelly?
The permit has nothing to do with ownership of a gun.
No.
And not, there's, they're two entirely different things. And the gun owners, I know, go ape about that thing. But in fact, it's just the permission to carry that weapon concealed.
Right.
Armed.
And like a switchblade.
Yeah.
But a farmer carrying a knife on his belt, that's not a problem. Get a lot of guns. Except when they carry it in the court.
Unless he goes to school.
Or the airport.
If I might, Madam Chair, I just wonder if there's at some point where we will need to have an increased presence appear during this session from members of this commission or our staff. And if there's any thought as to when that might be. Ken, Robert, anything on that?
I think Ken has to ask us for help.
That's the biggest thing, is playing defense when that guy has the bills start rolling in. And particularly, we'll have a better field this week when it starts rolling in on what we really need to do. But yes, that's something that we talk about, probably should be doing on a more regular basis. We've got a couple of bills ourselves with the association that have not yet been filed, but are important to us. And we'll have a better handle when it was rolling in, I think, this week.
I have two things. One, did we file for the commissioner to have credentials to go up to peer and represent Minnehaha County?
And that myself has. Each of you can go up as long as you speak as in your elected capacity.
Right.
You can do that without filing.
Okay. All right. And then, second, did, do the Minnehaha County employees remember the policy regarding lobbying up there and representing Minnehaha County? Because frequently, I'll be watching State House, and I'll see somebody testifying saying, "They're Minnehaha County so-and-so." And that may not be the policy of Minnehaha County. They're up there personally making some sort of representation. So are we, once again, following that policy?
We will remind them of what our meeting today is.
Thank you.
Anything else for Robert? Commissioner Barth?
Just to John's point, you know, there may well be good reason for people, say an issue representing artifacts comes up and they want our museum director to speak. I mean, that, he well may be the person that should go and speak on that. But he should ask and clear it with us as opposed to going willy-nilly on who knows what.
Commissioner Pecos?
I just remember several years ago, we had a circumstance where we had sent somebody up there to speak, and then immediately following him was somebody else from Minnehaha County to speak against it. So there's nothing like sending a mixed message up there. And I want to be very clear with our, with our legislative contingent.
That was attorneys what happens quite often.
Yeah.
I thought it was when John and I were there.
Could be.
Any other questions about legislative session? Okay. None. Move on. Item 16 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Do we have any liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly?
Last week, a question was asked about conversations in metro management or metro communications about coming back under the county. I will advise you that it has been discussed, and we're doing a study, I guess, I'm not sure exactly what it's called, but it's been about a four or five-week process of going through procedures and stuff like that. But one of the things they've talked about is, is going back under the county for employee status. And I don't know if they've talked to you yet, Kirsten, about it or not. I don't know if they've talked to Ken about it. But sometimes the cart gets before the horse on this thing. But anyway, it's, it's discussed. It will be brought up, you know, once they, and I've thought right now, it's kind of a talking between the legal people to see what the ramifications would be. And it'll come, it'll come first to the, to the board, or to our board, management board, and then be brought to both the city and the county.
Commissioner Pecos?
And without question, you know, I served 10 years on metro management council, going back to the old system and then transitioned to the new system. And those type of questions are best answered by Vila Tool with HR over at the city as well as Kerry Dever, because this all got vetted before metro council. And although I'm not on metro council anymore, Gerald is now on it. And Gerald, you were there at the inception, and you know all the issues. So we're really lucky that Gerald was sitting as a city council person as metro at the time. Now he's as a commissioner sitting on it, and he has a wealth of institutional knowledge when it comes to this particular issue. So we're really lucky that we've got people that we do on metro council.
Any other comments?
Two former councilors.
Any other comments? All right. Move on to new business. Is there any new business? I'd like to bring up one. In the NACO newsletter, it talked about the payment in lieu of taxes and that that had been left out of the omnibus bill. It still isn't completed, but I just wondered, you know, it's been a 27-year, or 37-year commitment to counties. And those, we don't, I don't think we use for them personally, but the school districts in Minnehaha County do get payment in lieu of taxes. And I just wondered if it was anything we wanted to bring to the attention of our representatives in Washington, because I think at this point that they have not weighed in on payment in lieu of taxes. Any comments, thoughts, and have they looked at it?
We get very little, I think, from...
We ourselves, I don't think we get anything.
It affects the Black Hills significantly.
Right. And the school districts in Minnehaha County also get money. Commissioner?
Do we have a value on what that really is worth to the county, to the school district?
I, I don't for the school district. I know for, for us, it's very, very little.
Right.
Can you give me a range?
For the school district?
No, for us. $1,000. I looked into it. $1,000.
I thought it was about $3,800, but it's, it's low.
Okay.
Any other new business? Any old business? Seeing none, we will adjourn for executive, to executive session per personnel, contract negotiations, and litigation.
It's my motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Second, all of them in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Did I miss something, John?
No, I was just thinking, could we throw something else in there?